...being where ever a spokesman and we usually allow three minutes for you to reply to us as far as on that. If you do for a group, you allow a little bit more time because it comes in for several people, but we want to allow everybody the opportunity to speak. So at this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order. First of all, I'd like to have a stand and I'd like to have Scott Mollman please pledge and I've asked Jeff Soutter please to pray. Please. [inaudible]
[inaudible] Our Father who art in heaven, we come before you now, Father, thanking you for this beautiful day. Thank you for our homes, our families, our friends, and all the many blessings which you shower down upon us on a daily basis. Ask dear heavenly Father that you please be with us during the course of this meeting. Please guide our thoughts, guide our words by the things that might be said and might be discussed, might be for the best of our community. As you please do with our leaders on the local, on the state, and national level, help them to enact laws which are in accordance with thy will and to do a wing of laws which are against thy will. Please be with the sick, especially those of our friends and family and neighbors, restore them to a normal portion of health if it be thy will. We ask that thy will be done in all things and not ours. Watch over us, keep us safe as we travel along the roads this evening and throughout this week. Forgive us of our sins. We ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Travis is, uh, Elliot is going to be acting our secretary until Tom Cypress, which is our legal counsel, which usually, Travis, I'll probably just go through and call out rule, so on that, so I'll start. Jeff Soutter?
Here.
John Meshler?
Here.
Danielle Walker? Adam DeCord? Shawna Humphrey?
Yeah.
Scott Mollman?
Here.
Jim Day?
Here.
Lane Fryberger?
Here.
And David Hoare. Those that are not here, we got to be all present?
All present.
All present except for the legal counsel. So he's supposed to be coming in a little bit later. Minutes that we have, if you've seen them, I don't know if they count them out, but all are pretty short, so I'll read them for the last meeting. Minutes of meeting, Washington County Plant Commission held July 2nd, 2012, 7:00, Council Chambers and City Hall building. This public meeting was called order by President David Hoare, Jim Day led those in attendance to sing the pledge allegiance and Jeff Soutter opened with prayer. David Hoare, that should be about the D, took a moment to introduce the newest commission member, Danielle Walker, to replace Brad Shelton as Washington County's Purdue Extension Board Member. Attorney Cypress took no call of those present, Lane Fryberger, Jim Day, David Hoare, John Meshler, and Danielle Walker, Jeff Soutter, and Attorney Tom Cypress. Absent was Scott Mollman and Shawna Humphrey and Adam DeCord. Attorney Cypress presented to the board with the minutes of the June meeting, which was approved by a vote of six to zero on the motion of Lane Fryberger seconded by Jeff Soutter. Committee reports, President Hoare welcomed those present and offered open remarks for first order of business, but committee reports as part of subdivision control. Jeff Soutter reported no activity by the subdivision control committee. Land use consultant Carrie Keller Steele reported that she did not have edits completed to the draft agricultural plan use ordinance for review by the commission, but she said she did have that showing existing permitted CFOs and in the three county schools. She also would be discussing details of the subcommittee ordinance drafting status later in the meeting. New business, next order of business was new business. IDM correspondence, President Hoare reported a letter he received from IDM that it had given approval for a group of votes for far best in Washington County. They reported that the plant commission would be receiving copies of documents for our retention with respect for this project. He inquired about our official filing procedures moving forward as a plant commission. Travis Elliott, Washington County Plant Director, confirmed he had files. Jeff Soutter suggested that project paperwork should probably be filed according to section, township, range, as opposed to after last name or address, noting that ownership and address systems are subject to change over time. CFO/CAFO regulations in math. He was turned over to Carrie Keller Steele, who presented the status of agriculture subcommittee work on agricultural control ordinance. A, minimum livestock numbers. The agriculture committee had come up with new proposed minimum head counts for our regulations to apply, which generally were lower than the numbers for the state regulations to apply. For instance, the proposal was to regulate where local farms had 15,000 or more turkeys. He also discussed the above referenced match, the setbacks proposed for each type of livestock. Road setbacks. Keller Steele also reported that there is an existing setback of 100 feet from the center of the road, and that the committee is considering an increase to that setback to 200 feet. Reasons for this increase were discussed including turnaround space required for heavy equipment. Reciprocal setback discussion. This was followed by discussion of various viewpoints that had been expressed about whether CFO/CAFO setbacks should be reciprocal. There were reasons presented as to vote, benefits and deficits of having setbacks be reciprocal for neighboring landowners. Lane Fryberger raised the issue of whether there should be a setback of the adjacent property in question was across the road. Keller Steele advised that it would be difficult for the plant director and committee to make preliminary approvals based on that, as there were different setbacks established where there was an intervening road. President Hoare announced that the issue of reciprocal setbacks would be taken up and voted on by the full plant commission at the next meeting. Public comment. President Hoare opened the meeting up for comments by members of the public. Ron King addressed the commission on issues of freedom, justice, mercy, and truth. He argued that the interest of the property owner should be take precedence over math. He encouraged the entire plant commission to follow the truth wherever it leads. There being known for the distance before the plant, uh, before the commission, Lane Fryberger made the motion to adjourn the meeting, seconded by John Meshler. Motion passed, six to zero. Are there any additions or corrections other than I struck D off of the last one? Don, do I have a motion to approve? Minutes as we're at? Do we have a motion to approve? Jim Day has made the motion. Do we have a second? Shawna Humphrey has made second. It is open for discussion. Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. Minutes are approved. I'm going to pass D around to this plant first. We sign, we'll move it over there so that we sign, so we can file it as approved. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome everyone to the current meeting tonight with the Washington County Plant Commission. Everyone who appeared before the plant commission is entitled to the legal right of due process. Therefore, everyone present who wants to will be given a chance to speak. We will ask that when you are called upon to speak, then you will state your name and address for the record. This time, we'll go into our business. Now, I have put the list up here, so if you come in late and need to sign that, so to speak, please do. Otherwise, I will allow you to speak, but after the rest of those people have signed. Committee reports. Subdivision?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Land use. We've got some business to deal with in there. Carrie Steele has come in. Do you have video or anything that you really need to set up or what?
No, I don't think there's any need to set anything up. In terms of what the board has, I didn't know, honestly, I wasn't, if you would like the audience to be able to see things, I don't know.
We brought, we brought everything. If you want it, if you have your notebook or whatever, we can set it up. It's not a problem.
That's it's, I would say it's kind of the hope of the board whether or not they, it would be easier to have everything.
It might be a lot easier for people to understand because we do have an audience today to go ahead. I mean, let's just go bring it in. We'll bring it in.
That's great. There's some things, while you guys are getting that.
Yeah, that's all right. You're recorded. Yeah, I'll look at it.
Yeah, there's nothing that's earth shattering. Mostly, I just want to make sure that everybody has copies of the latest drafts that I had. You know, the names and.
August 11th.
Yeah, the draft, what was that written on that date on?
I got July 31st.
The date on the bottom of it will be July 31st, on the other page.
March 27th revision date.
But what you have named is, Shawna found some typos.
Got it.
So yours is, the only thing that's changed from their version to yours is like, for example, in one of them, I had been located twice in one of their drafts. Things have been fixed in August. And just in case, this is the one that's 100% hasn't been had this fixed.
I think I'm understanding maybe.
That's the same as the August 11th.
I brought copies because I know someone that always prepared everything out of it. You all can hear me on the second one.
We have August 11th.
That one's, alright. The only other thing I put in there that wasn't on the one, the July 11th one, is the notice of agricultural activity, which is the first draft that happened, David. It's not something we're discussing today, but it did.
Well, we got the edge. It's good. I didn't think that it would not have happened.
Carrie, in your video stuff.
Thank you.
What do you basically have to show up on there?
Essentially, all I was going to do is as we were discussing things, for example, we're discussing the language on the setback, I can put it up there. And there's some other things that I wasn't sure if you wanted to do in this format or in the committee format with the example scoring, because there's things that were, because the example scoring, we referenced variable neighbor notifications, and there's no way to know, because no one did the neighbor notification because it wasn't a thing on the scoring system, then all those are blank. So I have some interactive things that we can look at, but I didn't know. I'm assuming that the reciprocal setback will take more time tonight than we have to get into.
If we do have time for the other, then we will, but I'd like to, well, yeah, make sure that we have that in our management, we've got a discussion.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would, that's what I assume, so, but we'll get started with that then. It won't take long to get it set up.
Well, I've actually got a question while we're on this meeting.
Sure.
About on the appendix A, under confined feeding operations. Is that supposed to be AFOs or animal feeding operations? Because you switch abbreviations down in the, you reference AFOs. Is it supposed to be CFO or AFO for that entire, get you following, or all the information related to the numbers?
Essentially, what has happened there is, and it's a good catch, because it's copied and pasted right out of the federal language, and so the feds reference AFO instead of CFO. And so essentially, it has become a typo in ours, so I'll just, I'll make the indication to make that change. So where it says, in the middle of page nine, it says like 27,000 landowners, if the AFO uses other than liquid, that should be CFO instead of A.
So all of our local language would be CFO?
Yes. That's, and I, I'll do a search, but that should be the only kind of that it purged because mostly just, since it was copied out.
Are we going to have any trouble with the translating, you know, that CFO is a state, you know, a definition? Our definition is different. You know, we're using CFO, but our numbers are lower.
Right. I don't think so. The reason I don't think it matters, because we have, in the appendix, we haven't defined what we call a CFO. So, I mean, you could call it chair, as long as it's not front of you. You see what I mean? I don't know that the language. We are not saying C327IAC16 for the definition. We actually write out what we call a CFO. So that's why I think it's okay.
Okay.
It can be amended, it's a pleasure of the board, but that's the.
Well, I'm seeing that in there, and I didn't want this to be confusing whenever we, when we take it out of this committee and talking about what we're doing in there, about if somebody from the state references us differently, you know, with interpretation.
Well, I think, I think it's a valid concern. The only thing, I understand what you're getting at, but if you make a new acronym, the only people that are going to know it are us. You know, so to use a bad analogy, the chair issue, you know, nobody's going to be able, if the state is discussing, you know, Washington County zoning, and they say chair, well, they're going to have to describe what chair is anyway, so I don't know.
Okay.
Because if you give it, if you call it an AFO, then they're, you know, anybody that's in the industry is immediately going to think of a federal definition of AFO, and so you'll have to say, no, 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 we call it AFO, that's just like you're going to say, no, we call CFO for this.
Okay. All right.
To make it, get on the screen.
We ready for.
And then, did, last time, did we have it in front of the clock?
Yeah, we had it, we wanted it in front of the clock, we got.
Right. I don't know. If we put it in front of the clock, can you guys, can you shift your chairs enough to see it?
Well, if we need to be looking at that, as the commission can go down, we'll go down and look at.
Yeah, and you guys have copies, you have paper copies of everything we're going to be talking about.
Right.
So is that good for everybody?
We'll move it, we'll move it when it's time. We'll have that.
All right.
Okay. Give me just a second to get my.
We've, we're drafting basically what we've been doing. We've been trying to draft some type of ordinance that deals with land use and agriculture, and then our main emphasis has been on confined feeding operations, classified as CFOs or CAFOs. We've got a small subcommittee that have been working on this with Carrie Steele as a consultant, trying to draft language together that fits Washington County. Some of the things in discussions that we've come up with is that we're looking at to reduce the threshold as one we classify as a confined feeding operation. Currently, in the state of Indiana, for an IDM state permit, it's 30,000 poultry, 600 hogs, I think 200 cattle, 300 cattle, and, you know, it has different numbers as far as the threshold before you have to get a permit. We have seen significant increase in operations that are fairly sizable operations, but they meet underneath that threshold. And currently, within the Washington County, we have one ordinance that deals with confined feeding operations. But it's not picking up, the majority of the operations are coming into the county because most of them are kind of underneath the 30,000 poultry. We see a need for good site location of operations, and we've been looking diligently in different ways of doing that. And we've tried to come up in a committee base in the plant commission and talk of putting together a point system together that a person that was interested in putting in a operation, that they can look at the operation and look at the format of the scoring process and be able to tabulate themselves whether the site is a good location or not, even before they were to come to the plant commission. It's been, we picked up some good parts from different counties and not from, everything from one county and multiple of different things in it. And one other thing that we are coming up with is, that's been coming up, that's controversial in the committee, and the reason we're going to bring it up to vote, is that reciprocal setbacks. And to explain what that is, is that we've got a minimum setback for a confined feeding operation to be away from a residence, a school, a church, we've got those parameters. What we're looking for reciprocal setbacks is that not only for an animal, a confined feeding operation that has to meet those setbacks, but if there's an existing confined feeding operation there, that there'll be a setback for a residence that wants to go in, that it has to meet the same criteria of setback on it. Some of us believe that that's fair. Some of it thinks that it puts a burden on the residential more than it does on the confined feeding operation. Some of my arguments with it is if it is a good setback distance, then it ought to be worked both ways. So we've had some issues, and I'm going to let Max, probably if he wants to, just be on the other part of that too, so that we have equal time.
Yeah, I'll take the time you want, when you get to.
All right.
Well, I just, I would say, do you mind if I kind of?
Yeah, you can go ahead and interject and then go through what you've got, so everybody knows.
I think the biggest thing to kind of start the conversation is to make sure that everybody's at the same point in terms of, the committee's done a lot of work, and we've said it for several hours now, and Max has been involved in those, and so I want to make sure that you guys, I mean, I'd love to be able to give you the, to go over it minute by minute, you know, and some of it, but we'll go over the basics so that you understand exactly what is on the table in terms of what they're going to vote on tonight. The number one thing that I want to tell you is that essentially, for all practical purposes, and I apologize, but for all practical purposes, the vote tonight has absolutely no bearing on anybody's life, because the, it's just a draft. It's not final. Once we get everything done and completed, you have another opportunity, there'll be several of these, my feeling is, there'll be several of these little, small things that the committee couldn't settle, so they need to go to the full public plant commission to make the decision. Once it's all together and all those little decisions are made, then it gets public noticed, they'll go out into the community, I'll probably be involved in that, where we'll say, okay, we finally got all those things figured out, what we think, and here's the whole thing, this is every bit of it. We'll come out of the community, the plant commission will have several meetings, and then after the plant commission, the commissioners also have to look at it. So I guess the main thing is, is we definitely need to know what, as a community, everybody is thinking, but I also want to be sure that you understand that this is, you know, this is one step in a, it's a marathon, it's not a sprint. So, you know, definitely let us know tonight, but I also want to make sure that, and I don't know, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, that this is the first vote of many, so. With that said, to kind of echo what Dave said, David said about the definition of what Washington County is going to call a confined feeding operation throughout the entire.
Can they see? Can you see? Can you see? Okay.
They're back to. Okay. Essentially, we use the terms in the industry, CFO and CAFO, get kind of used interchangeably, especially now that Indiana changed their law to lump them all into the same code. So for practices, for, you know, all practical purposes, whenever we talk about a confined feeding operation in Washington County as it pertains to this zoning, we wanted to make sure that we caught the farms that would have two turkey farms, and we feel that 18,000 is that number to make sure that if you're going to build up two turkeys, you're going to put two turkey farms up, you'll have to go through the process. So what we did was, we went through what the state and federal definitions for a CFO were, and those 30,000 turkeys, and we took it to 18,000 turkeys, then we took every other animal down to that turkey. So we did not want to say, the only ones that we want to regulate that are smaller are turkeys, but if you're going to build a 2,500 head hog farm, go to it without, you know, we want to make sure it was fair across all species. So that's why all the numbers are adjusted down. Then, and that's in our definitions, as we go through, and the main thing tonight is reciprocal distances, and I apologize, it's kind of. Okay, this is the language that is specifically being discussed tonight on reciprocal setbacks. The way it is page, hang on, I have to talk to paper. Yeah, page seven, middle page, development standards. I started here, but really, I think I need to go to the point system, I might, to explain how the reciprocal.
One of the points that the additional set, the additional distance in point system is necessary, just a little setbacks.
Correct. Right, exactly. Essentially, what I want is to try to, you're out know, with the 400 foot setback from all houses, public use facilities, or churches, that is a minimum. If you're within 400 feet, then essentially, you just can't do it. There's always the option, everybody, you know, there's always the option of a variance, but honestly, I don't think that that's going to be very likely in the future with work, because that's why you have our limits, or the, you know, the 400 feet. But, so you have to be at least 400 feet, and we've referenced this point system, but without going into tons of detail about it, essentially, what it says is that if you are an additional 250 feet, 500 feet, 750 feet, 1,000 feet, the further you are away from those things, the more points you can gain, the easier it is to get your permit. So the 400 is a bare minimum, and essentially, this is the language, it must be located a minimum of 400 feet from an existing off-site house, public use facility, or church. This shall be measured from the nearest CFO/CAFO structure, including lagoons, to the nearest house, public use facility, or church. This standard shall apply reciprocally to residential, public, and agricultural development. So essentially, whatever is going to go in there, if we have to, if the barn has to stay 400 feet from a house, then a house cannot build within 400 feet of existing operation. That's what we need to discuss. Got it?
You know, that, that's basically it. I'm probably here to finish the other setback.
It's three quarters of a mile from a school, that's the 3,960 feet, and it also must be located at least 200 feet from the center of any county road. One of the items that's in there, with a property line setback with pretty much everything, a county line or a county road who actually owned the center of the road, even though the county has a rideaway. On a public highway, the state actually owns the dirt, and so that creates the property line that you would have to keep setback from. So that's why they're referenced to the county and not a highway.
You're talking horizontal distance or short distance? I'm a forester, when we have to go measure plots, it is horizontal distance, it's not short distance.
Okay. Honestly, that's how, because I would say most of this will be done via a map with some ground truthing, my guess is horizontal. You know what I mean? You know, I mean, I'm going to guess that, I'll put the burden on Travis here, you know, there'll be some walking out there to make sure that those things are actually there, but most of the measurements are going to happen on GIS.
Most of the basically, you never go to check it out.
You would hope so.
It's, you have to start doing that slope measuring, getting trouble.
Can we get Adam to speak up a little more, because you're way back from the microphone, nobody can hear a word you're saying back here. Sorry, Mike.
He's not working.
Okay. Nobody can hear you. Sorry, but that's...
Max, you want to speak on the...
Yeah, I'd like to speak on the reciprocal part.
Max is on the Land Use Committee and then works with us from the start.
My position is that if somebody builds a chicken or turkey house 100 foot from the center of road, across the road from your house, if your house burns, you should be able to build back, no questions asked. You shouldn't have to come in front of what we're saying. My house, right now I have about 1,500 feet of road running and I have two sons. My intent is to give them a place to live someday if they want to. If this happens, when the chicken house goes in across the road on a neighbor's place, they got a right to do that. I don't feel fair that I have to give up my property for them to, that I cannot let my kids live on, but at the same time, the confined feeding operator enjoys the right to build within the setback. So if you sell on the ground, they could build on the same site that you can. They could build the exact same floor plan of the house that you can't build. It's because whose name's on the title, is whether they can build a house there or not if you're willing to sell on the ground. But they can wait 100 years waiting on your sale. You can't build there, but they can. That's my position, that a reciprocal should be, it should be set on your own property. I don't think it's fair to say if you worked with people for 30 years and all you've got is five acres out here and somebody builds across the road from you on a confined feeding operation, you should lose the rights to build there. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair for them to move right up next to you on the ground and you're not quite built on them, you could ask, everybody else has green food and aspirations, all they want to spend their money on. And you know, you locate a bank account, it might be secret, but they got this little button around. And just because they haven't went out and borrowed a million dollars of what poultry houses in, they shouldn't deny their rights with their dream being. But that's, that's the way I'm looking at it. And, you know, everybody has to look at the site, I've talked to all six commissioner candidates, there's going to be two next commissioners, and every one of them's in agreement, but they don't believe you still take the other version of the rideaway from them. Just by virtue of moving in next to them. And so however you want to, you know, take that into consideration, we're supposed to be getting something that the commissioners can agree to. When we get to the end, it's going to happen, say, well, Dr. Liz and Dr. Liz backed up 100 this time, the next year we'll come in and out and try to add 300 back in. I think reciprocal needs to come off the table altogether. That's my position on reciprocal setback.
Okay.
Do you have any more to talk to me about?
Well, I'll just, for interest in that, our whole intentions in this group is to make an equitable type of ruling that benefits all parties involved, not looking at one individual party over the other. And part of that is to be equal in, in distances and parameters and rulings that we are putting in. I made the analogy of this, if 400 feet is the correct setback, and you've got point A and you've got point B, and 400 feet is the correct setback, then it shouldn't matter what point A is or what point B is, is that, is the setback correct. Now, so everybody said, well, what is point A? Well, point A could be a resident or it could be a confined feeding operation, or B could be a resident or a confined feeding operation. But whenever we start going back and giving different, a retrospect for what it is and letting it come in closer on a setback than what we originally proposed for a correct setback, then I didn't see equality in that. You know, it's not our intentions or, well, minimize intentions to take people's property rights. And, you know, in some of the analogies, now I took one of the larger farms that's permitted, that's in construction right now, and I took the opportunity to kind of run some figures and run some math on it. And it's actually six farms that are 60 feet wide, 500 feet long, and it's currently going in in Washington County. And I took the 400 foot setbacks and I took the 200 foot setbacks that was involved in there. And yes, it does have an impact on the properties around it if they were to own right up against it. But the 200 feet that was proposed as far as the, from the county road, took half of that setback already out. Max at one time had proposed that there was going to impact with a single building or a two building, going to impact about 66 acres. This building right here and this plan that they've got, the way they've set up, the whole project entails if you take with all the setbacks, is a total of 53.03, the total package with the setbacks and everything within inside of that. If you take out the part for the building and the internal roads in there, that's 8.968. You take from the 200 feet, it takes 27.32, that's the impact of the internal nucleus of the farm on the 200 setbacks. So the initial impact is the borders of the farm or the land was right up on that edge of that line, if it was in that 200 feet. With this large farm, would it only impact 25 acres all the way around? You know, there's a new, unique situation with all pieces of property as far as where the location is and where a building goes in. What we're trying to do is get site locations where it's least populated, that it's in an agricultural area and that agriculture is being done in. We do not want to see, and I don't think this would be the intention, of anybody wanting to put a subdivision up against a confined feeding operation. And part of the reverse setbacks is to keep from encroachment of housing coming in closer so there would be more nuisance suits on it. So we're trying to be proactive in what we address on the reciprocal setbacks. So, I mean, if the setback is a correct setback, then it should work both ways. They want to open it up for anybody who'd like to discuss on this, because we are going to take this to the front. Are you on the list, Tony?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
My name is Alan Lytle.
And if you would, if you could come?
No, I'd rather, I'd rather speak from back here. I'm not comfortable.
Would you stand, please?
Okay. I live at 5152 Foxbury Road up in Jefferson Township, and I guess I just totally disagree with, with what was just stated in that anytime it infringes upon the individual who owns that land, that's a problem. My father, I remember in the 1960s when I was a child, he raised chickens and probably raised about 3,000 at a time. He owns 100 acres, his closest neighbor was probably a half mile away. At no point was there ever a concern that, okay, Mr. Lytle, there's going to be a reciprocal setback here in place and therefore your neighbors are going to be impacted by your choice to raise these chickens. And, you know, I just totally disagree. I think that the, the distances, you know, you're talking about large manufacturing operations, it's, it's not even a correct thing to say that these are farms. You know, you're talking about, as was pointed out in the paper, could be as small as seven acres. This is not a farm, this is a manufacturing facility. And therefore, it's, it was the choice of this, these people to come in and build these large chicken or turkey facilities. They should have to be able to cover the necessary land for the setback distance required by the law. And that's just how I feel about it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Rhonda?
Okay, it's, I'm Rhonda Green, 10130, Western Mill Lane, Kansas City, Indiana. The, in the article, in the editorial, the seven acres and 70 acres that were involved related back to the 750 foot setback that we currently have with the ordinance. The 400 feet is in the ordinance at this point right now and would considerably, you know, lessen that to 26 acres. But still, if you own just seven acres, you still impact many more acres than what you legitimately bought in the first place. Well, property rights, being able to build on your own property, what you, you want to have, is a given right in our county, and it should, should remain so. You know, because everyone knows, you can have somebody go ahead and start building something, and when it starts building, that's when you find out what it is. You know, because we have lives and we have things that we pay attention to. We don't usually put our noses up our, our neighbors' toothpicks all the time. And so a reciprocal setback, you know, you can look up and your neighbor's a CAFO. You know, this is why we have land use planning, so that if we don't look up, there are no surprises. You find out that you can't build on your own property because there's a CAFO. Now, land rights are an asset. And when I say own the setback, if you have property next to a CAFO, if you have a field or other really legitimate farming activities, you still own that right to have that setback on there. Have them own the setback, have them buy the rights like you would buy minimal rights. You know, go ahead and own the setback. You don't necessarily have to own the property. This actually helps the landowners to not have a big surprise in the morning, so to speak. Own the setback. You know, and you, and it's been brought up in the meetings that, you know, it just takes so much money to go ahead and put one of these forward. Well, you know, sometimes it's a blessing not to have to go through it, not to have a million dollars in debt, not to have possibly the, the market fall out from under you. You know, because all you have is seven acres. Okay? You know, it's a blessing and a curse at the same time. It is a commercial endeavor. It is farming, but it's a commercial industrial thing that, that takes resources out of our community. Seven acres, how many gallons do you use, Sean, a day? How many gallons?
A liter?
Yes.
4,000?
4,000 a day. So on seven acres of property, and, and we've had this, this is not fair because David brought this forward to me off the side one time, but the asset, I mean, the, the resources that go into this to create one or two jobs is incredible. We're selling our property and our resources, not really providing jobs, but doing that. And so it's not nice to have it on just seven acres of land. Okay? You know, you, I know David owns an unholy amount of property. Okay? I'm aware. And, you know, your space like, what, 10,000 gallons a day? Your, your confined feeding?
I have one hand, yes.
Yes. So, I mean, you know, you have at least 100 acres. That's a resource that you already own the property to. If the CAFO was in, or the chicken house, or whatever you want to call it, is on a seven acre plot with like several houses around it, and you brought this forward to me, you know, you can run it well dry. You know, so by, by buying them to seven acre properties and, you know, being a developer of chicken houses, you know, you, you put them in different places and you really just go ahead and, and just eat up our property. It's not, it's not an angry response, it's just, you know, you need to see the other side of it too. And I know you're fighting for your own rights and your own property and your own confined feeding operations. But if this goes through, there could be a tremendous backlash. You know, and I'm really, and, and I have concerns for the farmers that actually aren't professional about it and, and have it on several acres of land and are good neighbors. You know, because it is valuable. We are one of the largest producers of poultry in the state already. You know, it, it, it can't be easier and cheaper to go ahead and build on seven acres than it is to build on your own farm or maintain and renovate what you already have. It can't be. Otherwise, we'll just eat up our land that way.
Okay. Anybody else to talk on the list who'd like to speak?
Hello, my name's Lou Cowleton, 4953, West Prowl Ridge Road, County of Murray. I was just wondering about the, the value of, of the, the properties that border the CAFO. The value of them as far as the, the smell mainly, although in my area it's mainly cattle. That's all I can say.
Okay, Mr. Marshall?
Simpson Sunset Farms is probably the spot in Jefferson County. So what you're doing tonight, I'm trying to understand the process coming into this for the first time right now, and where the public and the people can interact. You're just passing on one document as part of one Plan Commission document for planning, is that correct?
We're basically working with one piece of language on one piece of document.
Right. Then I'm wanting to understand what the process is, which you alluded to, you know, many steps are going on. So this step though, even though it is addressed tonight and voted on the, or day, also may be possibly amended or readdressed at some time in the future.
Correct, there will be a public hearing.
Right. And is all of the information that you have here, these electronic documents or paper documents, are A on the Washington County Plan Commission's website, if there is such a thing?
They are not, and the reason is because essentially it is so, I mean, it's still a baby. And even though we want the public input, the reason you have a committee is to have a small enough group to be able to manage the information. And so once it is out to the public and it is in draft form, a draft that the committee and the Plan Commission are happy with, then yes, it will be available anywhere we do with it.
How long before you anticipate a full finalized draft? And how big will that document be?
Honestly, probably not very big because the goal of the commission when they hired me was essentially, you know, they wanted, they wanted the ag part and that, but we also needed to put in place some other zoning issues, I think mobile homes are also going to be addressed. So essentially, you know, most zoning, if you go to, you know, various counties, their zoning codes are volumes long. That is not going to be the case. Right now, with all the appendixes and the, like every definition, so far we're at 12 pages.
So in concept, you're creating the law in the administrative code comes later?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And when that comes out, how long will the comment period be? Does it take 30 days, 60 days, 90 days?
It's prescribed, and I apologize, I don't know what it is, but there's a set amount of time for any new zoning. And it's even for, whether it's a brand new code or it's an amendment, there's, it's very prescribed. How many days, how many public hearings, and in what order they need to go, how many days in advance they're noticed. And usually, even for a small change in a zoning code in a county that already has it, they do smaller rollout meetings in townships. So for example, we'll put, you know, maybe 25, 30 days in advance, we're going to have a meeting at, you know, such and such community hall, everything, you'll have it in advance plus, then there'll be extra visuals and... Everything, you'll have it in advance plus, then there'll be extra visuals and most of the commission and myself will be there to answer questions so that when you do come to the final public hearing, you're not going, now, what are we doing there? You know, you've already had that learning curve.
And everything will be decided here, there will be no decisions or movement, final document or draft document. Are you saying state commissions? State commissions, not counties?
No, no.
Okay, I want to see how high.
Yeah, no, this is strictly a county document.
The commissioners have to vote out.
Yeah, I know that, but beyond that, because you're dealing with CFOs, you have to stake issue there.
The reason is, and that's great, that you, the state chemist office has the authority to regulate the storage, transport, and placement of all fertilizer, of all fertilizer. That includes manure. And so, that's one of the things we've been really careful about is, you know, counties have a right to, to guide their land use. They just can't get in the state sandbox. So, we're just really careful that we're not in their sandbox.
So, we're still looking several months away before A?
The goal, the contract is one year. We're hoping to have a finished document and hope, you know, my goal is to have everything ready so that I can be in those rollout meetings in November and December. Now, that's, so far, in July and August, we've had two meetings a month, really trying to get through.
Maybe it's a little more.
Well, the committee meetings, we're, you know, we're trying to get those in.
How many committee meetings, how many committees are, how are they? There's just two, I think. There's a subdivision that there's like.
Yeah, and we have some, you know, the mobile home and then actually I have a, I'll call it a framework committee to free, free. So, you know, those are.
Thank you. Does that agree with what CFOs require in an idea?
Yeah, it's pretty extensive.
And then, how will this, you know, if I didn't go over on CFOs, would that override this at some time? Because that could apply there.
Yes, and no. The reason is, is that essentially, when you go through the state process, let's say that Rhonda is going to turn her small chicken operation, she's going to go big time. And she applies to the state and let's say she goes through all of it and then realizes that she's only 150 foot from the road, which that's fine with the state. It's not with the county. So, then she comes to the county and the county's going to, we're going to go like this, we're going to say, oh, paid it for you, go back through the state process. So, usually what happens is it's cheaper, it's easier to go through the county first and make the county happy. And then, almost always, because the setbacks at the state level in terms of site placement are not very, they're not terribly restrictive. And so, then, when you look at that, where they really come into play to really help residents out is the operation. Once you're up and running, the way they do oversight in terms of manure placement and things like that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else that wants to speak, who's on the last? These are good comments. David?
Yes.
All right. David Norris?
Norton.
Norton?
Fifty-four, thirty-four, North State Room, thirty-nine, in Scottsburg. Actually, Little York, where I live in the county. Yeah, I'm just, notice that you were talking about this big operation and having acres and it was not that many with impact really on, even with a very big operation, what you were talking about. And I think that's why, I think with this whole zoning thing, I've heard for 20 years, you know, I think 92 was the first time they rolled out zoning and the ordinance came out, people were very upset and they got put down. And then, it came out again and put down. And every time this comes out, people don't like it. It sounds like it's going to come out again, but it's going to come out after the election and it's going to roll out and people are going to find out, you know, after the election, everyone getting upset that they didn't know what was going on. I don't think people in Little York, in Cardensburg, in these corners of the county really know what's happening with them. And it's a solution to, like you were saying, a very big operation, would not have that much setbacks affecting the neighbors and it's like, well, if it doesn't really have that much impact or solve that bigger problem, and if we've been having these scare stories for 20 years, what's going to happen if we don't have zoning? There's lots of counties. And the counties of, well, counties without land use planning have a lower unemployment rate than the counties that do have land use. And there are studies that shows that land use planning, land use restrictions actually increases income inequality, that it tends to help the elites in the affluent and hurts the middle class and lower middle class in the poor and increases economic gratification, you know, economic segregation of the different economic classes. And you see in the cities, they have land use planning, they have zoning, they have restrictions on what you can build. And when you pass laws that says everybody has to have a nice house, a brick ranch house and have, you know, rent the property, well, in the cities, they tell people what you've got to have or you can't build, and they have homeownership. And if you start, you know, you don't make people rich enough to have a ranch house by passing a law. And this is taking away property rights. You put, the people that aren't building the chicken house are going to lose their rights to build their property. And the county is going to substitute their land use plan by, the county thinks, you know, this ought to be for this kind of operation, this is where businesses should be, this is where homes should be. Now, people, they weren't taught to earn their money, to buy their property, and they have their own plan for how they want to use their property. And I think that for something that doesn't solve, it's likely solved in some future problem, something that might happen. And because somebody, someday, might build a chicken house somewhere that we're going to control all the land use, have a comprehensive land use, you know, if you're willing to make one ordinance for, and without zoning, without having different rules for different areas to just say, you can't, you know, you've got to have a new chicken house that's to be so far from any existing house, including your own houses or your neighbor's houses and not discriminate against, you know, your neighbor because, whereas you can build a house so close to the chicken house, but your neighbor can't build close to your chicken house. You know, I mean, people have gotten along for years, thousands of years, where one person does what he wants with his property and the neighbor with his property. And you can't, you know, let it be nuisance suits, well, you know, you can't pass a law that will feed some people from being nuisance. You know, some people will get along, some people won't get along. And it doesn't all have to go through the county government to affect your neighbor. I think we'd be better off without the zoning ordinance. Roll it out, if you're going to roll it out, roll it out before the election so everybody can see it and know what they're voting on when they vote this fall or vote for commissioners. And that's what I say.
Okay. You.
Hello, I'm Gracie Brown. I think the majority of these people who came up here, in the last month, there was a small piece of property that was going to be for sale and these people wanted to put a turkey house on it or some sort. If you implement this and you do this, then you're going to affect, I know at least five landowners that probably are planning on leaving five acres for their grandchildren to build a house. And that stops them because it's so close in that. Twelve, fifteen acres, whatever. You're going to stop any of those people who has purchased their 20 or 30 acres to leave to their grandchildren or their great-grandchildren to build a home on. I mean, are you saying, oh, if we're going to do this, are we going to grandfather the previous landowners in, you know, to where I can build something for my great-great-grandchild? I mean, that's, by putting that in there, I think you're telling me that I can't move a great-grandchild. I can't put a house there, but if I have the chicken farm, then I can build me on the far corner up there, a $300,000 home. And I don't understand, you know, and I, and I'm like, said, I haven't been to these meetings, so I really don't know, but I just find it hard to believe that if you can pay for something and work for it as hard as you do for 20 or 30 acres your whole life to be able to save the money and put a house up, and somebody can come in and buy seven acres and slap up three turkey farms or three chicken farms, and then you tell me that I can't put a house on my property now that I have saved the money to build that house? And I, you know, and I may not know it all, because I definitely don't, believe me, this was something in our neighborhood that we've been discussing for, I'm going to say, four or five weeks. And then, we seen that in the paper and we thought, whoa. Now, we're going to be dictated on what we can do with our property that we've worked our lives for. You know, some of us didn't have things handed to us on silver spoon, you know, and lots of us didn't. You know, we've all worked for everything we got. But for somebody to stand there and tell me that I can't put a home on my property because somebody wanted to put three chicken barns beside me or three turkey hatchbacks or whatever you want to call it, I have an issue with that. I mean, and, you know, I'm sure the people need to know, you know, I probably wouldn't have paid attention to the article had we in the neighborhood already thinking, you know, wow, they're going to put a chicken house nine miles out here and you've got three homes so close it's not funny. Now, my new Sweeney owns half the other county, but there's a small area there by four-quarter school, you know, you said schooling. Does four-quarter school, that is an old school, does that count as it can't be? Right. So, I'm just saying, you know, it really needs to be looked into further. Thank you.
We'll hold that to a minute.
Okay. Well, I'm getting anxious here. Come on now.
I want to read something from the comprehensive plan that had several people involved in it. This dealt with concentrated animal feeding operations. And if you want to look at it, it's 8.42 of the comprehensive plan. This is one paragraph that has to be. At a minimum, CFO regulations should focus on what agricultural zoning districts are appropriate for, such uses as lot sizes, setbacks for nearby towns, residences, water features, and other sensitive land uses. Additional design requirements could be incorporated to address local concerns such as covering solid manure storage to reduce air emissions or requiring synthetic liners for wasted goods to prevent release of contaminants in the environment. First part of those, I think that, you know, as far as what we are looking at, we're trying to address those concerns as far as lot size, setbacks, nearby towns, residents, water features, sensitive lands, also food. You know, there's going to be some unique circumstances out there that are going to be quite different, you know. And one of them, and I will address this, in some of the scoring language in there, there is a scoring for density of population. Okay? Say that a 640-acre area, which is a section, has so many people in it, such as, I think, what is the score?
Oh, it's, I'll put it up to the hook right now. The average, there are an average of 18.9 homes per square mile in Washington County. And if there's zero to five homes within a mile of the operation, it's 50 points. 30 for six to 10, 20 for 11, instead of 18, 15 points for 18 to 23. And then, if there's over 50 homes, there's no points, just keeps crashing down over the year's points.
The reason I bring that up is that what it tries to do is trying to put that site location away from a populated area. It actually makes that setback, they have to be a lot larger. So, we're trying, we're working at this. And I appreciate the concerns and I want to address if anybody else has something to
The sentence regarding reciprocity says it applies to agricultural development. Can someone give you some examples of what are agricultural developments? Is that changing attract from woods to pasture or pasture to top?
Right now, I can look some, but right now, agricultural development is not defined. The logic behind it, and I apologize, I don't remember if it was something that was discussed or if it was just my own brainchild when I was drafting it, but essentially, to not have, it was to take out the whole mile setback from farm to farm. So, it's to make sure that they're not putting, they're not splitting land and putting another barn right here. It's essentially keeping several farms or, you know, there's an ethanol thing or it's just, it's basically to keep 400, if a minimum 400 feet from this farm and this chicken turkey hall. But security-wise, most operations are not going to do that, but that was the bottom process was to help ensure there was some distance so that you didn't have a cluster of several farms in one section.
No, I'm just thinking, you know, if a pasture gets converted into crop land, is that developing a agricultural?
You know, we can add, it's like a moral just to do in addition. I have a question to kind of present to the board and just listen to everybody's thoughts. One of the solutions rather than, I mean, in addition to the four hundred setback, it's an issue about, because I'm, you know, trying to see both sides 100% and where each side is coming from. Maybe the solution is more than a lot size and it is, I mean, in addition to the setback, but maybe it's a lot size issue. So, for example, if you kept the 400 feet, it might be more palatable if they had to own 10 acres, 15 acres, 1000 acres, whatever it may be, but maybe a minimum lot size for a facility would be more palatable.
Yeah, I think maybe a combination of both, like we, well, of course, it deals with how many buildings, you know, they put on, specifically, you put it in for so many square feet that you have absolutely angry to ownership. Of course, this ownership is not going to entail anything as far as the use of manure or anything on that. It's just going to be basically entailing as far as getting the setback, the amount of property that have distance. Maybe this is going to be the facility that they have brought to give a thousand acres because they have a 100% that is still. I think that's been a combination of.
And the only way to make, I mean, basically, there's no fair way to do it, it's 100% You know, having a setback for a given project is out there. Because then it's a very clear, I think, 100%. But that may be lost time, like, well, maybe.
You want to, you know, any other plan commission?
Well, I just want to say, I mean, I'm glad we're having this discussion because four years ago, we had nothing. Regardless of whatever we come up with, 10, 15 years ago, it was the land developers that we were worried about and now the economy has shut that off or something. Subductions going in all over eastern part of the county. But then we got exploding to go bulk the operations. It just comes good and bad with that. There's not a lot of one opportunities in the county. A lot of these people, and that's just how they're finding a way to make it. But, you know, as a homeowner myself, I mean, I know we've got, I'm really struggling with, with all sides of this as far as reciprocal setbacks and setbacks in general going from 750 to 400. I appreciate everybody being here and I think we really need to have the public weigh in with their opinions because. because we wanna do what's right for all of you and what the general public is. But, you know, to say that we don't need any planning or knowing, not just look what's going on, the world's changing. Things that you never dreamed of, happening 50 years ago, we're experiencing. So, you know, like Adam said, we're not gonna be able to promote something that's gonna please everyone. But, um, I do like the idea, maybe the next least lot size is bigger, but it's combined being operations. Because I don't think that's a good situation, and we've all had to deal with down here, so that's all I can say.
Okay. Buy up the fine division.
Before you take a vote, just, I'm just gonna go ahead and put forward, before you take a vote, Shawna and you, I'm sorry, David, because you have owned and developed, or are in the process of developing confined feeding operations, it would be maybe a very good thing, because you have a conflict of interest, to go ahead and excuse yourself from this vote.
So, you'd say that because we own and operate a confined feeding operation, we should not be voting?
You have direct opportunity to make money from this.
Really?
Yes.
In what way?
Well, no, you can't, if it goes through reciprocal, I know that Shawna's looking at, or at least, you know, Shawna can go ahead and buy a 7 acre plot and put another turkey house out.
Really? I did not, I did not know you knew that much about my situation, because no, I can't.
Okay. But you are, you are owners, it would be good for you to not have conflict of interest and not vote.
All right, I mean, direct this back, you own a house, and these other people own a house, should they not vote too?
Well, you own a house also.
Correct.
But you, a house I'm not making money with. A house that's not a commercial off the line.
I think the whole point is that the value of homes may or may not go down because of the decisions that are made here.
All right.
Are there pending expansion plans?
But David, yes.
No, there is not.
There is not? Did you go ahead and, uh, go ahead and stop that?
I do not have a process, I do not have anything here to tell you.
Nothing yet.
One of the reasons that these, that the diversity was established on this floor is for this very reason. So, we have farmers on here who have confined feeding operations, we have non-CFO farmers on here, and we have other people who don't farm at all, is to get the input. And if we had to exclude their input and vote every time something came up that might affect them, I think we're excluding everyone. Now, if there is a known plan, I think, to expand or something, where someone might benefit or not, now, I'm not saying expansion alone, but if a vote on this issue could immediately greatly impact any plans, current plans that you have, adversely or positively to one another, then it might be a good idea to recuse yourself. But...
But that is not the case with me.
Okay, the question being, the 400 foot reciprocal, will that impact any of your neighbor's ground?
No. There is no expansion, period.
No, I'm not talking about expansion, I'm saying the 400 foot reciprocal right now, would that impact from either one of your neighbor's properties? Is your building 400 foot from the property line, all the way around?
Mine is about 120 from the property line, but the neighbor that owns the property to the east of me has a huge sinkhole, and there's big, they're not gonna build there. They wouldn't be able to start building that for 600 feet past my property line.
But it would still be an asset. It would still be an asset.
I think that if we took the oath of this, we were not to take the vote if it had with financial gain on it. And we took that seriously.
I'm pretty...
And I'm telling you right now that I do not have anything financially to gain from this vote.
Okay. And that needed to be stated out in public, okay, for both of them.
Well, I resent the accusation that kind of about it.
Well, I'm not saying it as an enemy, I'm saying it as a friend, and I, you've done some sketchy things before. And it's just, okay, here it is. It can look sketchy, it can look sketchy.
I'd like to know if you're using this as a platform for your politics.
In a way, yes. In a way, yes. You know, because this is a public thing. This is a public thing. And if you encroach upon somebody else's property rights, because you can go ahead and put this back into committee, everybody goes home. Okay? And until somebody says something in public in the newspaper, then it won't come forward again, and you can sneak it on through. You've been on this reciprocal setback like a tick on a dog. Why, David?
Because it's equality. And whenever we did this, it had no preference over any faction in this. My landowners, like I did the analogy, point A and point B. Now, what you're wanting us to do in there, and the reason I put it with reciprocal setbacks, is that basically, we are trying to get site location where there's not a dense population, and where there's not against residences. What good is it whenever you allow the residences to come in closer than what you originally established?
Own the setback. Own the setback.
What is the, what is the reasoning behind that?
If you can build your own house...
If the setback was originally good...
I'm not gonna, I don't wanna get in an argument with you. It looks sketchy, I'm pointing it out that it looks sketchy. If you decide to recuse yourself or not, that's up to you. And this is politics, Shawna. This is politics. This has to do, this is government affecting the community. And I have other platforms I can use. And I told you...
Well, you will not use it here.
Okay.
Because we are directing to a specific item. We will not use this as a political button.
All right.
Now, I would like to point back for a minute, a couple of things of this that are pretty intriguing. This, this, 'cause we, we fad around the idea of mandatory lot sizes. And it's been mentioned about purchasing setback rights, which is largely the same thing, or very, very similar. And that's, that's pretty intriguing, and how, you know, shouldn't we write that into this ordinance? I'm not trying to weasel out, okay? Pretty much no, I'm gonna vote. But I'm curious if we should incorporate that in, because those are pretty intriguing changes to this. Were we defined, you know, how that setback will come into being? Were we wanting to find whether the CFO owner could purchase setback rights, or we mandate a lot size for them to accomplish the same thing? Should we be talking about that in a bit more detail on the reciprocal issue?
How would you go about buying the setback?
Well, see, that was gonna be, that was gonna be the question, because I don't know. I mean, we've got, there's right of way laws on the books, that kind of thing. But I don't know how you address, I'm just asking a question, just that might be a lot size.
All right. If we take this to vote, we have to have a motion to take, whether we take this vote or not, is up to the fine commission. You can take it, send it back to committee, whatever your intention is, if you send it back to committee, strongly recommend, recommendations of direction for that.
I'd like to make a preliminary couple of comments. Number one, I think this, this one point has come forward because the committee wants direction from the whole fine commission of the section made with the issue, that's before we adopt the entire ordinance. But if it won't really become final, and there will be an opportunity to put on this again, when the entire thing is presented. I mean, essentially, what we're doing is giving corrections to the committee, the graphic. And I'd also like, if you take a look at the site document, it might more eliminate the concept of reciprocal setback. Not necessarily the specific language adopted or anything like that, because I think there's some things that could still be tweaked or whatever. But I think, like, is accurate to say that what we're really after is, do we wanna have some setbacks or not? Or are we willing to adopt the entire section there as a specific language?
The way I'm putting it on the agenda is to deal with the reciprocal setback.
Just the concept.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just ask that if someone does make that motion, that you limit it to that.
Do you see it that way, Max? Is that what we want?
Yes. What if you need to setback 150 feet from that setback, because if you do that, it definitely affects the property. And it works. What if you just go back to the 750 foot setback? Make vote to a home of 100, a smaller reciprocal setback.
Or a policy. What if you had a problem with that setback?
Yeah, partly not setbacks out all the time, is that what you're thinking, or not, when you step back?
It does, so, because what it does is it limits people on the use of the property. I think by implementing both, what happened originally was, in 2007, when this, this motion first came up, IDAM had in place for, for operations that were largely under control, 30,000, they had setbacks like property lines, etc. They didn't have setbacks for, they had homes. And I think the, the one thing that could be done is, and it would address, I think, part of the noise system. And if we had a setback of so many feet from the property line, and so many feet from the nearest residence, what Washington County Commissioners did in 2007 was, said, okay, IDAM's already regulating the property line setback. There's an issue of, okay, well, now, what if someone's house is right by a property line, this situation, someone comes in, let's create a block loss, and they might be, then the property rights setback fall, but they're still gonna be perhaps definitely close to your house. How do we do that? Let's do a, a residence setback. So, including both a property line setback and a residence setback, there are two different numbers. Essentially, it's still one way or the other, and I think we might address some issues. They were limiting, forced people's operations closer to the center of the property, and, but also, may some concerns about their ability to regulate around.
May, a couple of things. One, in the language is the 200 from the center of the county road, but I think that we were trying to get exactly what you said. If essentially, the center of the county road would also be a property line. So, the concept was, and it was, if it's 200, if the setback's 400 feet, and the CFO buys 200 feet of it, and they own half of it, surely the house can then be, can also own half of the setback. That was the concept behind, we did just exactly what John discussed right there with 400, 200 concept, that the CFO would own half of the setback. That's what that is, that's why that's there. And then to answer your question, John, about the 750 versus 400, and this is why I think it's so dangerous to piece me out and ask for comments on one piece of it, because then it brings up questions about the whole thing without everybody having the benefit of being in all those committee meetings. The reason it's 400 is the point system. If you go to a 750 setback, there's no sense in having a point system. Which, maybe that's the direction that the board or the committee goes, I don't know. I don't know what their writing interest for Washington County, but I can tell you, what brought us here was, if we did the 400 foot, then the person could quote unquote buy additional points with additional setbacks. The thinking being, the further away you got from the house, the school, or whatever, that it continues to raise your points, continue to make your site be better, and it allows you, you know, it's really hard to get through the system. If you put in a 750 foot setback and a point system, you'll not have a single farm left. I mean, they'll not be able to meet this point system and the 750. So, that's what we did with 400, and then the additional, that's what gets you the points. And you can get them in a variety of ways. The additional setbacks, one, section density is one, a clean environmental history is one. And we used, I think it was added in the meeting, about that all of the points now are measurable at the time of application. There isn't any more, for example, one of the things used to be odor management, whether you, you know, use wet/dry feeders. Well, the building wasn't built yet, you can't verify that there's a wet/dry feeder. So, we took all that language out, and now all the points are either it's there, or it's not. Either you have an identity violation, or you don't. You've been in business long enough to not have a violation, or you don't. It's, and it's really, it's pretty well laid, and I went through and did the percentages. And it's pretty well, playing record is like one, a section of it, section density is a section, additional setbacks is another piece, and then water, so essentially, they're all about 25%. Environmental history, section density, increased setbacks, and verification ability to retain water. They're about 25%. So, that's why, I mean, again, I don't, I don't know what's gonna be, I don't know what the end result will be, because it is just a graph, but that's what goes to that number.
I mean, there's, there's hopefully operations you could be 50 feet from the building, and that's no one to, then it involves a hundred and fifty, but a couple of, 750 feet is kind of like, how they maintain, how they maintain their, uh, that's what you can do about that, tell them how that...
And like I said, I don't know, Melinda, I don't know what the final product will be. I just really, you know, why, why we were at the 400, it had a lot more thought into it than, I know why you think we just pick a number out of the air and that's the result of it. I mean, it really did have a lot of thought process behind why that number was there.
If it was 750, what's the, no one would do it.
Okay. Yeah, David?
Yeah, there's, there's one thing I thought about, nobody's talked about yet. And that's that, you know, a lot of farms have their house is next to their barns and all of their buildings. And sometimes I know people that have built poultry houses right next to their own house. And you have a lot of aging farmers. So, I think, you know, you're gonna have a lot of people that may keep their house and retire from farming, and maybe wanna deed off their land to their kids, or sell it to some other, you know, their neighbor farmer. And if you're gonna have, all of a sudden, you're gonna have a house attached to a poultry operation. And if something happens to the house, it'll be non-conformity, people will be able to build the house back. Or if, you know, something happens to the barn, the barn falls in for the stuff, for the snow, they won't be able to build a poultry house back, because it'll be non-conformity. So, now, if you had the, where you had to purchase the, you know, the setback rights, you know, if you could sale your farm, or you give your farm to your kids, sell it to your kids, and also sell them the setback rights, or, you know, say, you know, the, you know, some kind of option, you know, or the right to bail on your land or not, to go over it, to surrender it, you know, but... Or whatever you do, that, you know, if you sell your farm, and you've got your poultry house next to your house...
Or whatever you do, that, you know, if you sell your farm and you've got your poultry house next to your house, or if you move and you decide to keep the house there and sell it to somebody else, then you're gonna have a non-conformity thing there. You've got a lot of places where a house is, you know, the person built their house, poultry house right next to their own house.
Well, they've been had talk. And it's got this language. We give ones for people having their house be the closest to the direction. And because we've heard discussion where there's buildings they've set out in a remote area, with their house, their house is not there. We actually give, if they've got a house sitting on that piece of property, we give additional points from there because they're residents.
You know, what if you're eight years old and you're retired?
I know there's a lot of analogy we can put together, you know.
That's real. I mean, I... Well, when it's a done deal, we're talking... I think what we're after is, if someone's not looking to build a house next to a poultry operation or a poultry operation next to a house, that's an existing condition. That's not actually, no, that's... So, it's something that's right there, and something we can't really afford, because there's so much up there. And we're actually encouraging it. Because of course, we're actually encouraging it to have, you know, points. If they want to, they will. It's just always saying, we accept, we accept, we do that, and then we want some house.
All right, we have a motion from Danielle Walker to table this vote. And then do we have a second? Anybody who has made a second, it's open for discussion.
What's the table of vote regarding-
Reciprocity.
Laws of that table? No, no, it's not setback, because it's the issue of reciprocity.
We really keep our name in our name unless we have a motion. We have to have the main motion to lay that motion.
Okay. All right.
So, I guess I was wrong.
Could you add a question or something?
Yeah, we don't have a motion.
All right. For procedure, anybody want to make a motion for a vote?
Want to make a motion for a vote?
John Michler has made the motion for a vote. Do we have a second?
Make a vote in favor. Just to have a 200 on.
200 on the second.
Can't vote?
This is a motion, Danielle wants to make the motion to table... Okay, it's pointed.
Okay.
All right.
All right, take procedure.
This is an FFA advisor, all right?
I was an advisor, you know, we all went to the section contest once, so don't get too excited. If we don't make a motion, then we don't know no reason.
Right.
So we can have no motion, and that means we're not taken here. If we make a motion to vote, I, if you move, let's just say, since April, say, "I move that we have a reciprocal." Okay, and it's seconded. And I lay it, and then that's out there, we discuss it, and then I lay that on the table. It means that at the next meeting that we have, we are going to vote on that. You can postpone definitely to a specific time. So maybe if you don't want to do it at our, when it's on our September meeting, but we want to do it at our October meeting, then I can postpone to a definite time that we're going to do that. We can't just lay it on the table and never bring it back up for discussion. Whatever that motion is that we lay on the table, that means next time we will vote either yes or no.
Having said that-
Or we could not have a motion at all.
Having said that, you can have, you can open up the motions if anyone wants to vote on it. Now, not only that, make this into a discussion, you can open up the next motion to vote. That's the other option.
All right, have we already gone down that bridge too far?
Same vote.
I withdraw my motion.
You can do that.
I withdraw my motion for a vote.
Did you ever make a second? Is that this right? Good. All right. I still, okay.
Well, my motion was out of order. My request was out of order.
All right.
I think what we're after is, we came here to discuss whether we want to vote on making a certain setback requirement as a committee before that established, with that established. But if so, it'll be something for a final vote, then it'll be the final, when we get the final ordinance drawn up. If no one, if, as a group, we decide that we've got a lot of good positive input, but we're just, there's too many unanswered questions, additional things we need to think about, maybe we don't want to vote on that yet. And no one makes a motion to vote on it, and they don't. Even if someone says, "Well, I gave the sound of light, that's what we set out to do," then make a motion on it. We just see those little votes. And then someone can give it to the table or make a second. It's like, someone may choose not to even make a motion. If no one makes a motion, we can force that. Or if someone doesn't make a motion, a second, and then we have a discussion table. But if no one does a motion, we don't have a motion. Eventually, this needs to be pressed, because the subcommittee is looking to this for guidance. But I think in a lot of the, what I hear, is a lot of the many ideas and thoughts that came up, maybe it's something we want to revisit before we bring it to a vote or something.
I think the subcommittee did get some guidance. You know, I think from the public and from our own discussions, I think the subcommittee did get some guidance. And we should probably revisit this.
Okay. As, is there a motion for a vote? Seeing none, it dies for lack of motion. My recommendation, getting back to the subcommittee, is to take all the comments that were made here to discuss now, analyze them, look for additional information. I think there was a lot of input from the public as far as some different scenarios, some different options, that we really did not energize too much in the subcommittee. So with that, I move that we go back and tell the land use to reevaluate it, bring a new recommendation before the plan commission. Is that agreeable?
Do we need to go ahead and make a motion to that second?
I think it's a sense of direction from this meeting, you know, to go back. I think we'll do that. Yes, that is agreeable. Okay. Without a vote on that, I think that's our order of thinking. Point system, if there was anything else that anybody would want to see, you know, out of this, it carries dotted up on the screen, you know, after me, you can take a look at. All right, so I want to be courteous to everybody's time and stuff. And I appreciate the input that's been done. I think it was well-based. I appreciate everybody being cooperative as far as bearing their testimony to it. Without that, there'll be, the land use on that new business, calendar review of monthly meetings, September meeting. Now, I want to be on the same page with everybody as far as our September meeting, because we had Labor Day, that was a... That was a problem. What does anybody recommend that way for a company?
September the 10th is the time we had set for the next meeting.
That's what I've got, September the 10th.
And you use this bill?
September 1st.
Is this bill in? What are we gonna ask?
I'm...
Is anyone saying?
I... I thought I- Last check, the tent, and we will mark the 7, otherwise we'll have to readdress for the crowd here in there. We originally set for September 7th, there's our meeting, 7 o'clock back here. Otherwise, look in the paper or public notes in there. And I'll do it in the air crowd if we change that, all right? 7, Friday? It's Thursday, Monday, 7, Friday. That's Sunday.
Monday, it's Monday, September 10th, that's our time.
All right, the idea, September 10th, we'll do the calendar. Yeah, September 10th. September 10th, 7 o'clock. All right, that's what we'll work with as a breakdown. Target date for the land use?
August 21st, 23rd for land use.
Okay.
On the 22nd, Tuesday's not correct, it's 21st.
Danielle, so check, so check, so check, so check.
No, August 21st. That's Tuesday.
Yes. If that one we did was a setback, all right. Okay. Audience, now party at the end, we usually let you add remarks, you know, back. If anybody would like to address back to us again.
Uh, yes. Sure, Alan Lidle again. I guess I'd just like to say that, you know, if you're gonna enact any kind of a law that takes away from the landowner, then you're basically taking away his rights as a landowner, even though he still is gonna be responsible for paying taxes on that land. So keep that in mind.
Okay. Ron?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Can you keep it non-political, please?
Pardon?
Can you keep it non-political, please?
Non-political?
Yes.
I don't understand. Could you clarify that, please?
Now, don't bring up the United Nations or anything of that nature, please.
Yes, how about Abraham Lincoln? Is that acceptable? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ron.
He was a political man, and I need to know. Thank you, sir. Yeah, Abraham Lincoln said, "Those that deny freedom to others do not deserve it for themselves." Was I to say it again, or maybe so? "Those that deny freedom to others do not deserve it for themselves." Abraham Lincoln. "Those that deny freedom to others do not deserve it for themselves." Abraham Lincoln. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Ron. That's my shortest presentation you made.
Thank you, sir.
If not, if there is no other business for you, Ron, before this plan commission at this time, I would entertain the motion to adjourn. Next honor, Adam Ford, made second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, stay here and shut the lights off. Thank you very much.
I have the right to ask.
You'll see, we're not, I can back right off the field.
I'm not shy. I really don't know, but I would be educated.